The regular meeting of the Fredericksburg City School Board for July 20th, 2016 is now called to order. The time is, I can't see, 8:43 a.m. May I have a roll call?
Reverend Bailey?
Present.
Ms. Holmes?
Present.
Ms. Kay?
Present.
Ms. Miller Richard?
Present.
Ms. Ream?
Present.
President.
Recommend the board convene in closed session pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act 2.23711A, Section 1 Personnel, which is a discussion regarding employment recommendations, change in position, contract adjustments for 1617, resignation, release from contract recommendations, retirement recommendations, Head Start VPI positions for reappointment, extra duty assignments, summer school staff for 1516, superintendent contract and school board appointment. May I have a, oh, now what do I do? Oh, I just blew it. I'm in charge for five minutes and I don't really know what I'm doing.
A motion please.
Oh, may I have a recommendation, a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Miller Richard, second by Reverend Jarvis. May I have a roll call?
Reverend Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Miller Richard?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. This isn't recording, is it?
Is that moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
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 The next item of business is organization of the board for the fiscal year 2016-17. Floor is now open for nominations for the office of chairperson of the board.
Is there a mic on?
Yeah.
I'd like to move that we elect Reverend Bailey to the position of chair.
Second.
Nomination. May I have a motion to approve the nomination of Jarvis Bailey for election as the chairperson of the board?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Reverend Bailey, chair is yours.
Voice returns.
Good morning.
Thank you all for being here. I know this is exactly what you wanted to do on a Tuesday morning, right?
It's Wednesday.
Oh, see, Wednesday.
Yeah.
I've been on vacation. Sorry about that.
When it's dark, or when it's light outside.
Say what?
It's gonna be like walking out of a movie theater when it's light outside. You're gonna be all discombobulated.
All right, here we go. The chair opens the floor for nominations for the office of vice chairperson of the board.
I'd like to nominate Elizabeth Ream for vice chair.
Second.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the nomination of Elizabeth Ream for election as vice president of the board?
So moved.
May I have a second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion passes unanimously. Dr. Milton?
I recommend that the board appoint Ms. Deborah Wright to the office of school board clerk and Mr. G. David Baker Jr. to the office of deputy clerk, and that each of these persons be bonded in the amount no less than $10,000 with premiums paid by the school board.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richard, second by Ms. Ream. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Thank you.
Further recommend that Ms. Marceline Catlett be approved as the superintendent's designee to attend meetings of the school board in the absence of the superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richard, second by Ms. Ream or Ms. Holmes, okay.
Oh, well, I don't know.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion passes unanimously. Approval of our agenda.
So moved.
Well, let me, there's an addition, an additional action item to be added to our agenda, the reappointment of superintendent. We'll add that as item XC1, and I'd like to note that item XA5 refers to the VPSA Spring 2017 Technology Bond Sale, not 20, I'm sorry, refers to Spring 2017 Bond Sale and not 2016. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? Now, Ms. Miller Richard.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept this agenda. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. The next item of business is the establishment of the regular meeting time and place. Dr. Milton?
Recommend that the first Monday of each month at 6:30 p.m. be designated as the regular meeting time for the school board, and that these meetings be held in city council chambers unless otherwise announced. A list of proposed meeting dates is provided with your agenda materials.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Miller Richard, second by Ms. Ream. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
I have one request. Mrs. Wright, would you email us that list separately, not in a packet? I was unable to extract it from a PDF. Thank you.
The next item of business is to approve our minutes from the previous meeting. Everyone has, should have received a copy of those.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 6, 2016, regular school board meeting and the June 23, 2016, special school board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Holmes, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ream has given a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? The motion carries. Recognitions. Word of the month is patriotism, and for that, Mrs. Elizabeth Ream.
Okay, so the word of the month is patriotism. Patriotism is defined as love of one's country. The Pew Research Center has been asking the question of people regarding identification with patriotism since 1987. According to the Pew Research Center, consistently over 90% of Americans identify themselves as patriotic or very patriotic. However, how people think of patriotism takes many forms. Some people believe that patriotism takes the form of honoring national symbols like the flag, singing the Star Spangled Banner, or reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Others believe it means defending your country in a time of war. Still others believe it takes the form of exercising your right to free speech and having the ability to disagree with aspects of your government while still loving your country. There are many ways to show your patriotism. According to Adalee Stevenson, patriotism is not a short and frenzied outburst of emotion, but the tranquil and steady dedication of a lifetime. Patriotism.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone present this morning wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we move to superintendent's report. First up is our consent agenda. Dr. Milton?
Recommend approval of the consent agenda, which includes the authorization of warrants, student fees for 2016-17, Head Start approval, textbook adoption, VPSA Spring 2017 Technology Bonds for Sale Resolution, and school nutrition program bids for fluid milk.
Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Holmes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ream. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Yes.
I did, for the textbook adoption, Dr. Thomas, I didn't see on there, I like the lists where they rated things. I didn't see an electronic version for some of the, is there not, are we trying to get textbooks that also can be accessed?
Sure. The companies offer an electronic version of the hardcover text. The committee that was formed, which comprises teachers from all buildings across the division, indicates that they did not desire the electronic text.
Okay.
So, we, with the agreements that we've established with the companies, we could elect two chapters that for an insignificant cost, but they indicated that they did not need them.
Okay.
I for a health textbook that they might, you know, they're using it for six weeks or nine weeks, maybe not as important as a textbook they're gonna use all year long, the electronic version.
That's the sentiment they gave us, that, you know, their class sets, these are elective courses, they're specials, so that the online option, they did not feel was necessary. I did pose that question to the committee.
Okay. I just think, you know, more and more we're moving toward that way, and I just didn't see it for these particular ones. Okay, thank you.
I also have a question. We're getting ready on our action items to approve policy revisions handed down from the VSBA, and most of them are in response to the Virginia Department of Education. But I'm presuming that these textbooks that you all reviewed have already been approved by the state?
Yes, we pulled texts from the approved list. The approved list that's generated by the Department of Education beyond core subjects is very limited. So our policy requires that either one, we pull from an approved list, or that we consider four different vendors. And so, in adopting these texts, we actually reviewed six different vendors, we rated four.
Okay.
So, that's essentially what the process entails. Generally, for core academic subjects, the Virginia Department of Education has been really diligent about providing an approved list, and that's what we will select from from the very beginning, because otherwise, in terms of a difficult process.
Right.
To make certain that the content is aligned with standards.
Well, I was reading through the policy revisions, and there's a new policy that, regarding that you have to have the issues of dating violence included in the family life curriculum at certain stages, so.
That's correct. The principles have been, I submitted an email to them detailing that dating violence, domestic violence, has to be covered in that content, that's correct. We also made some adjustments to the process of adoption to include updating their website, providing the list on the website. So I've spoken to Dr. Gordon a couple times about the policy changes affecting textbook adoption, and those changes were reflected in my process.
Okay, terrific. Since these are new policies, I wasn't sure if they were overlapping.
Oh, yeah, those new policy updates, Dr. Gordon and I spoke, he submitted to me in writing the policy changes that needed to be put into place governing textbook adoption, and those policy changes did occur.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Uh-uh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion is approved. Next on our agenda, we have action items, and the first action item is personnel. Dr. Milton?
I recommend approval of the personnel list as distributed.
Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richard?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ream. Discussion. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Miller Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ream?
Yes.
Reverend Bailey?
Yes. Motion passes. Number three, action item, school board vacancy. As a result of the recent election of Mrs. Holmes to one of the at-large seats, the Ward Three school board seat became vacant. Having advertised vacancy and interviewed persons interested in serving, the board would like to discuss the appointment of an interim replacement to serve effective July 20, 2016 through November 8, 2016, when a special election can be held in conjunction with the general election. May I have a motion from the board regarding appointment of the interim school board member to represent Ward Three?
I move that Jennifer Boyd be appointed on an interim basis to serve as a member of the Fredericksburg City School Board representing Ward Three for the period of July 20 through November the 8, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richard, second by Ms. Ream. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote to approve the motion, to approve the motion to appoint Ms. Jennifer Boyd as an interim, on interim basis to serve as a member of the Fredericksburg City School Board representing Ward Three for the period July 20 to November 18. Roll call vote, please?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The motion carries on a vote of one, two, three, four to one, five, four to one. At the general election, 2000, in May 2014, Ms. Janet Holmes was a successful candidate for the Ward Three seat on the Fredericksburg City School Board, assuming the office of the term of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2018. In the May 3, 2016, general election, Mrs. Holmes ran for and was elected to one of the at-large seats on the board for a term beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, Therefore, school board Ward Three seat became vacant as of July 1, 2016. As a result of this vacancy, the board is required to petition the Circuit Court of the City of Fredericksburg to issue a writ of election. A resolution has been prepared to authorize the school board attorney to file with the Circuit Court of the City of Fredericksburg a petition for the writ of election. Dr. Milton has a recommendation.
I recommend the school board approve the resolution authorizing the school board attorney to file with the Circuit Court of the City of Fredericksburg a petition for writ of election.
May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Miller Richard, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Holmes. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
For the discussion, this, this election, this special election will not cost the taxpayers any money. Just wanted to put that out there.
Okay.
It'll take place at the same time.
As the presidential election.
Right.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item four, policy revisions.
I recommend the approval of policy revisions as recommended by the Virginia School Boards Association Policy Services on first reading.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richard.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ream. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item five, election of delegates for the 2016 VSBA Annual Conferences.
I recommend that the board elect a delegate and an alternate to represent the school board at the VSBA Delegate Assembly and Regional Meeting during the VSBA Convention.
So moved, and may I make a nomination at the same time?
Yes, you may.
So moved that we ask Mrs. Holmes to serve as the delegate and Mrs. Ream to serve as the alternate delegate at the VSBA Annual Convention.
Second.
Sorry.
It's okay. It's been moved by Ms. Miller Richard and second by Ms. Kay that we elect as our delegates to the VSBA Annual Convention, our delegate, Mrs. Holmes, and our alternate, Mrs. Ream, thank you. I'm still thinking it's Tuesday. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that. Number six, lunch price increases and the breakfast price continuance.
Recommend the approval of meal price changes as indicated in the board's documents for 2016-17 school year, which represent a 10-cent increase for lunch at Walker Grant Middle School to 270, and at James Monroe High School to 280. Breakfast prices are recommended to remain $1 at each of these schools.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Ream, second. Ms. Kay, any discussion?
I'm excited about Lafayette doing the CEP program. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item seven, appointment of Head Start liaison. Dr. Milton?
Recommend the board appoint a member to serve as the board's liaison for the Head Start Policy Council.
So moved, and I'd like to nominate Mrs. Holmes for that position.
Second.
And for discussion, I offered to be her backup.
Okay. Ms. Holmes, you're getting a lot of action today.
I know. It's, yeah.
It's been moved by Ms. Miller Richard, second by Ms. Kay, that we approve the appointment of Ms. Holmes and as a backup, Ms. Miller Richard to serve on as the Head Start Liaison liaisons. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'm looking forward to it.
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item eight, approval of early graduation for high school seniors. Dr. Milton?
Recently, we advised the board that our administrative staff has talked about allowing seniors to finish or graduate one week prior to the end of the school year for all other students. The administration and the staff at the high school are in favor of and recommend allowing them to do so for a number of reasons, which are included. One, having those seniors graduate a week early would allow teachers to focus on making sure seniors meet all the criteria for graduation without having the distraction of exams and grades for students in grades nine through 11. Two, after the seniors have graduated, teachers can then focus on the academic needs of students in grades nine through 11, as the teachers would have fewer students in the building and in class at the most hectic time of the year. Three, removing all the extra things, including graduation responsibilities in the last week will help with teacher morale. Four, senior teachers could be freed up during the last week to provide support and remediation for students in grades nine through 11 who are struggling. I would also like to say that the, based on the number of hours of instruction the state requires that we offer, more than the 990 hours that were required, so the seniors would meet those requirements as well. So, therefore, I recommend that the school calendar for high school seniors be changed to allow them to graduate a week early, beginning with the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richard?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Holmes. I'm sure there will be some discussion.
You were so right. So I did have a couple of questions, and I think overall, it's a, it's a good idea, and I've talked to students from other jurisdictions who do this, but I do have a couple of questions about, some of our classes combine sophomores, juniors, seniors in the same class.
Correct.
So what happens to that exam schedule for the sophomores and juniors that are in that class?
Can I ask you?
I can ask you, well, I'm looking at Dr. Rochelle, but, you know.
We met this week, we haven't ironed out all of the details, but I think we have a pretty good plan. First of all, in those combined classes, it's gonna depend on the number of students that are underclassmen in the class. For example, in a class of 20 students, if there are five undergraduates, then those students would take their exams at the same time the seniors take their exams. If there are five seniors and 15 undergraduates, and we haven't picked an exact number yet, the seniors would be pulled from that classroom, take their exams separately with a proctor, just like we do with SOL tests.
Okay. So my next question, I'll ask you, is about athletes. Because I know that that, that happens some, you know, in Spotsy and Stafford, too.
Sure.
We were at soccer finals, and I know tennis and track also, so what happens?
All right. A couple of answers to that question. First of all, we did have a senior this year who was participating in an athletic event and did not attend graduation.
Right.
At a national track championship. Secondly, we have not determined exactly what the date of graduation will be. It could be on the 9th, which is Friday, that they would end, or on the morning of the 10th, or depending on availability of Mary Washington, it could fall Tuesday of the next week. We're leaning toward Monday morning, Saturday morning at 9 or 10 o'clock, depending on what we can work out with Mary Washington. Couple of things could happen. We might have students who are playing in a state championship, graduation's at 10, it's over at 11:30, and a game's at 1 o'clock, and they could possibly make the game. The other thing is, they may have to choose.
Okay. So in relation to that is, I'm gonna go back to the, the students who might be in a senior class, and you said they might be taking their exams early.
Sure.
So let's say they, too, are athletes. That could mean that they are taking their exams early because, to accommodate the senior schedule, and they're trying to compete at the state level for tennis, track, or soccer.
Correct.
And I think that's, that's a burden to those students. That's hard. That's really hard to be studying for exams, and be traveling, and be playing, and be practicing. So I would like for us to at least consider what we would do for those students if they might be able to take them at the normal time, or would, I just feel like that's, that's asking a lot of those student athletes.
A lot of those students, athletes are gonna be exempt from exams anyway, because of their, their grades, but, but, Ms. Holmes, I have to tell you that many of us sitting here were athletes and went through the same thing as we competed at both the high school and the college level. We expect more of our athletes than we do of our students normally academically, to have higher standards, have to have higher grade point averages even to participate. I think it can be done. I can cite a number of examples of students who weren't the greatest students who did well in those circumstances. That is taken into consideration. The exams, you know, the students, we haven't even figured out the exam schedule yet. It could be one a day, it could be two a day, we don't know yet. But of course, all those are taken into But of course, all those are taken into consideration. However, I would say that our main concern is academics, and that we think this is best for the academics of all students.
Okay. Thank you.
But we can ask for reassurance that you are looking at all of these issues, and as you work through it, we'll be working to do the best for.
Yes, yes, and, and like I said, you know, we, I think we have a really good, really, really, really good framework in place for this, and we, we see it has worked in so many other school divisions, and so many other high schools, and, you know, there are conflicts, just like there are conflicts with everything else that we do.
Right.
But we're, we're going to do our, and, you know, there will be some unintended consequences that come up. We're trying to think of all the scenarios that might arise, but it could be that we get to a situation where it only affects one student or two students, and that's easy to work with one or two students.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
To make accommodations.
Right. Do we know, do you know when state championships will be?
We do.
Okay.
The state championships that would be held that weekend are, the Virginia High School League puts out a calendar years in advance, and the track championships are the previous weekend, the week previous or prior to graduation. High school, baseball, softball, soccer, I know at least those three are that weekend.
Tennis is usually that same weekend, too.
Yeah, and it all depends, again, it all depends on where the state championship is held, you know, because the Virginia High School League is trying to work through sites now, because I believe Liberty is no longer a site. And oh, by the way, your superintendent's going to be serving on the Executive Committee of the Virginia High School League for the next two years.
All right, well then work that out.
Yeah. But yeah, I know, in years past, some of our tennis players have missed graduation.
Yes.
For the same, and that, because they were down in Rose.
Because it runs a little bit later.
Yeah, it runs later, right. So, okay.
Okay, so we do have a probably second motion before us to approve the early graduation for high school seniors. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Item, action item number nine, workers' compensation for school board members. Resolution. Dr. Melton?
I recommend the school board adopt the school board member workers' compensation policy resolution as provided.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Ms. Miller Richards, second by Ms. Holmes.
And this workers' compensation policy only affects us while we are on school board business.
Correct.
Say that again.
Right.
We're only covered while we're on school board business.
So don't get hurt.
Right.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We have an additional item here that we need to see about, and that's the reappointment of the superintendent. May I have a motion regarding this reappointment?
I move that the board, with the superintendent's concurrence, terminate the superintendent's employment contract ending June 30, 2017, and appoint Dr. David G. Melton as superintendent to a term of four years, beginning July 20, 2016, and ending June 30, 2020.
Been moved by Ms. Miller Richards, that we terminate the superintendent's employment contract ending June 30 of 2017, and reappoint Dr. David G. Melton as superintendent to a term of four years, beginning July 20, 2016, and ending July 30, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kay. Discussion. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Congratulations. You're hired.
It's an honor.
I was going to give you my leadership speech, but I'll wait.
We have two hour parking.
Yeah, okay. Informational items, only one, and that today is our financial report. Mr. Baker?
Good morning to all. Before you have the May 31 report, as you can see, we have positive variances on projected revenues and expenditures going into the end of the year, so things look about as they should. I will let you know that the summer payroll accrual has already been posted to the general ledger for the, for the July and August summer payroll. It will show up on the next financial report for the month of June, which I'm currently working on. As soon as we're done here, I'm going straight back to it, so. Are there any specific questions I can try to field?
I've been getting text alerts that summer school's been moved from Walker Grant to J M, and then there was a, there was something about the HVAC. Is that something we need to worry about financially?
That's a great question. We have not received the official bill. We actually had a power surge that affected both Walker Grant and Lafayette Elementary School. However, Lafayette's chiller was still actively working, so we did not have to move summer school out of there. Walker Grant's HVAC system, the malfunction, was more electronic oriented, and it was repaired on Friday. And right now, we actually have a technician there today giving us an estimate to install a surge protector, so to make sure this does not happen again.
The surge protectors are, we did some research, and the surge protectors are whole building surge protectors, and once the, the system realizes that there is a surge in the number of amps, I believe it is, and I want to say it's 700 or something like that, it kicks everything off in the school, shuts everything down. What has happened is the surges, the breakers don't stop the surge to everything in the building, and it just fries the electronic components. So the surge protectors aren't going to be cheap. We don't know what it's going to be. They're not going to be cheap, but in the long run, you know, we, these things are, what, two, three years old, and we're having to replace them.
Right. I knew we'd just done it, so.
Well, we have, is any of this under warranty with our, the big contract that we have?
Not anymore.
No, the, the contract was basically for energy efficiency and management.
Right, no.
This was for actual, the part itself, the control board that controlled the chiller at Walker Grant. And as Dr. Melton explained, when the surge came through, it basically fried the entire thing. So the only thing that we had working at the time was the rooftop units in the gymnasium, while the rest of the building was still warm. So similar to when the A C goes out in your home, we had three technicians working on it for 11 to 12 hours a day, with the final resolution occurring on Friday afternoon around three or four o'clock. And then we also have trainers doing an outstanding job of making sure that the troubleshooting will occur, and they were, part of them was to actually recommend it. After some discussions I had with Dr. Melton when we were out of town, for us to go ahead and look at this route. Our newer buildings have surge protectors, but Walker Grant being built in 1988 did not.
So there's no, like homeowner, you know, like, policy?
All the equipment had a one-year warranty. It's pretty standard, factory-based.
All right. Thank you.
You done, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Old business? None. New business? We have the school board work session comprehensive plan, August 1, 2016, 4:30 at James Monroe, and then the V S B A Legislative Advocacy Conference, September 15, 2016. Any additional new business? Good as the order? Any comments?
I'd like to welcome Jennifer Boyd as the, as our appointee to the board.
Yes, welcome. May I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards, second by Ms. Ream. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.